January 23rd, 2023 Sylvania Board of Education meeting to order. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Lavelette?
Yes.
Ms. Kefeller?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
For the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, we're starting out with you, Dr. Motley.
Well, I would like to begin my superintendent's report with a special thank you to our Sylvania School Board of Education members. January is National School Board Recognition Month, and I just would like to take the time on behalf of all of our employees and our families to thank each and every one of you for your commitment and your time, your dedication, and your support of Sylvania School students and families and community. Your advocacy is amazing as you continue to support the efforts of public education. In this month, we take some time to celebrate you and recognize the work and philanthropic efforts that not only you, but also your families make so that you can be here to do this work. Around the room, we have a number of posters from each of our school buildings. We also have, on behalf of Ms. Bay's class, from the Culinary Fundamentals Course, the students at both Northview and Southview have vegetable soup, chicken tortilla soup, loaded baked potatoes, chocolate chip cookies for our board members to enjoy, which may come in handy because we will have executive session tonight, so you guys can all eat then and not necessarily be on camera.
And then we won't be talking.
You won't be talking, right? But really, that highlights this month, and your services all the time. You're on 24/7, we just appreciate you. So I wanted to share that in my superintendent's report. In addition to something I highlighted in suit notes last week, we started our kindergarten parent meetings, and we actually are welcoming in the class of 2036 to our schools. 2036 people. When I say that out loud, we get the same reaction. In some instances, people are laughing, and then others are like in total shock, but it's been my pleasure to greet our new families. And some are returning, some are like their first ones is out the house or about to get out the house from kindergarten, and they're like nervous and anxious, and they have sweaty palms. And the others are like, this is my second or third, just give me the information because I gotta go home. So, I gotta go. We're right. But it really has been quite nice. We've had great turnouts at our building. We were supposed to be at Hillview tonight, but of course, our staff is here, but we have them through Thursday this week. So that concludes my superintendent update.
Thank you.
Moving on, commendations.
Okay, we have commendations this evening.
Yes, you do. I would like to recommend for approval, the commendations score for our Northview students who took the ACT on December 10th and passed with a 26 or higher. And then we also have a couple of SAT scores of 600 and higher also at Northview High School. So I recommend those for approval for recognition of achievement.
One second. Any questions, Connor? Congratulations. Congratulations, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Okay, this is our first chance for public participation for agenda items. Okay, and this evening, we have Mr. Dan Greenberg, who we are all familiar with. You know the rules, right? Three minutes? Okay.
I'll keep it brief.
Okay.
Thank you for all you do again, and the support. Appreciate you all, thanks for all that you do. And I wanted to, with that in mind, want to thank you for this evening, for putting on the agenda the resolution for consideration without the Ohio Equity and Equity Group and the work they've been doing and the idea of us and Sylvania Schools joining that effort. We know how much money we are already losing Sylvania Schools through EdChoice vouchers and things hundreds of thousands of dollars every year that impacts the education of our students in the school district. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much for considering that resolution.
Thank you. All right, we are with you, Mr. Kofler.
All right, so 5.1, we have minutes from previous meetings. We have the December 19th meeting in which Mr. Kefeller was not there, so we could do that one first, and then we could do the other ones if consented.
I will approve. One second. Any questions? All right, call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
I'm Steve.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
5.2, we have minutes from organizational meeting, work session on the 9th, and then the 10th of the special meeting, and then treasurer's report for the month. So we're six months in. I gave you a little comparison on my live kind of forecast and projection, so we're falling right in line with where we are forecasting for this year. Slight increase in revenues and then a slight decrease in expenses. So we're trending in the right direction there, but everything's falling in line with what we forecasted for this fiscal year. And then 5.4 is the state or higher cooperative purchasing resolution. We used to be members in this. It just allows us to, when we're purchasing group or big ticket items, to go out and look at contracts that have already been competitively bid through the state or Ohio purchasing cooperative. It used to be a hundred dollar fee, but in COVID, they waived that fee, so it's really free. So it's really just passing this resolution, me filling out a quick document, and will be approved there. We're looking at potentially being a way to purchase our security cameras through our grant that we received a couple of months ago. That's all I have for the month.
I will approve on a consent basis. I was 5.2 through 5.4. I'll second. All right, any comments? I guess I have one question. The purchasing program, did we, did we already, is this similar to the bus, the bus purchasing?
Yeah, just another, you know, option, but they don't, the buses, they don't, I don't think they do buses, the cooperative ones.
So this is a different entity?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only question I have. All right, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right, back to you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.1, the acceptance of gifts, where we have a donation of $150 PetSmart gift card for the new ArborPills therapy dog, and the gift card is a donation from Directions to Reddington.
One second. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very nice. Call the roll.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.2, the approval of two overnight field trips. One, the Southview Theater Director, Brandy Shepherd, will accompany 30 students to the Ohio State Festival Conference. And then the second one is the Northview Hockey Coach, Steve Elliott, will like to accompany 20 students to Cleveland for a team bonding experience.
I will approve.
Second. Any comments?
I have a question. I thought that the request forms used to be executive. Are they public?
Are they public?
I think we used to have an executive content that had the students' names on them, but now since they've been more broad, we just talk about the number of students who are going. We have the names, but you're just approving the trip, so it's probably less than public.
This is the first time I've seen it in public as a question. I don't really follow up seeing students anytime.
Okay. That's maybe the last couple of years we've had. What is it? Is that a good question?
Thank you for the question, recommendation.
I have a question. What is, what is the bonding experience? What type of activities are there going to be?
It's actually working with Mr. Irwin and Mr. Elliott, the coach, something they do annually. They do, they do play a couple of games in Cleveland, but then the dads go with them, or a parent or guardian go with them. They generally attend like a Cleveland lumberjack game, or like a minor league hockey game, or I think one year they went to a Cavs game or something like that. So it's just kind of their, even though there's two, there's two games established, it's their, their weekend, but they generally bring their best.
Okay, call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.3, the administrative statement for our 2023 high school summer principal position.
No, no. I'll second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.4 for approval. This is an increase in our preschool peer tuition from $100 per month to $125 per month effective for the upcoming school year. It should be noted that we have not had pay increase, my understanding, or tuition increase for about 10 years now.
I'll second. Any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.5, 2023, 2024. It says 2024. Yep, that's interesting. It's my document says, it should say 24, 25 in the thing.
That's what's in the actual.
Yeah, the attachment says 24, 25, but the item itself says 23, 24, so.
We can still.
Yeah, if you could catch that, add it in note, it should be an approval for the 24, 25 school year district calendar. We recommend approval.
I will approve. I'll second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.6, which is a resolution that the board would approve for the, our Sylvania Schools to join the vouchers hurt Ohio. If you would like, I can certainly read that, or it's attached for public view, but I didn't know if you would like me to read it through. It's up to you. But I do recommend approval of this resolution.
I will approve. I will second. Any comments?
Yeah, very excited that this is before us. I think this is a great cause, I went to a meeting. Actually, Mr. Reber, by the way, Mr. Reber makes wrong, you do, I know you're really apt to. And I'm glad we're, we're being a part of this, I think it's important in our organization.
I'll second that, and I went to a meeting, a capital conference, and I went in kind of with an open mind, and, I mean, I was convinced, not just on the merits of the lawsuit, but all, and the likelihood of success, or that there should be success, but also just in the cost benefit analysis, that, you know, not participating could hurt us more and cost us more in the long run. Basically, our dues are essentially the cost of one voucher a year, so every time there's a voucher, we can lose significant amount of money. But, and it's, even though, and I wanted to say this because one of the things that hooked me was that even though Sylvania doesn't have as many vouchers as some of our larger neighboring school districts, it ultimately still affects us the same because the way the funding is done this year, it sort of affects everybody's bottom line, and I'm not even going to try to explain it, but there's some really, really good literature out there on why even a district like Sylvania that doesn't have as many losses or as many vouchers, it's still a significant impact to our budget. So that was really what kind of convinced me, so I'm glad we're doing this, if we do. Call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.7, just as a discussion topic and review, and it's first read for policy 5114 for non-immigrant students and foreign exchange students.
I will approve.
This is the first.
Oh, first read.
We can have discussions, all right?
Yeah.
So is this the way I read this? So like if we had someone move into our district mid-year, we wouldn't accept them? Or, because this is saying, we won't accept partials, partials for replacements, just full year replacements?
And this is more in line with our foreign exchange students, and actually, Mrs. McDonald is here tonight along with Mr. Zeroff to address this question. So I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I'll start. Closest at home, if we have an extenuating circumstance within our two high schools, let's say we have a Northview student who would need to open an old south, we try to do that at a natural break in the school year, whether it be a quarter or semester, just for those credits to transfer, even though we're one district, we have two high schools, we want to make sure they align the best they can so that those students don't lose credits. I like even saying, a little bit farther out from home, if we have a student who wants to, who has a notified move to like, let's say, Washington local, and they want to move like in October, we generally will offer, if they can provide transportation, a high school student to finish out their semester here at Northview or Southview, so those credits are completed the semester, then they start the second semester at Washington local. Does that always happen? No, it just makes it a little cleaner between the two districts, specifically two high schools. The tough thing with, with the exchange students is if we have somebody show up in October, say they're a sophomore, they're coming here on an exchange program, say they come in October and finish the year, or say they start in August and leave in March, or any type of partial year, one, we can't guarantee those credits are going to transfer back with them to their home country. Two, we've also done research, and this is McDonald's here, that Dr. Motley said, we can talk about it more, but working with some of those companies, some of our, some of our exchange programs, their home, their home schools in their, in their home countries, we require like a reentry exam to make sure they've completed and fulfilled all the requirements of like their sophomore year. So we're ultimately kind of, we're not kind of, we're looking out for those students who, we don't want them to come here, I'll use a sophomore again, to come for a partial year, think they've earned those credits when they technically haven't, go back to their home country, they don't transfer over with them, and then they may have to take that sophomore year over again in their country. Or if they're here for the full year, we know they're fulfilling the requirements, fulfilling the credits that are expected from the school level. If you have anything you want to add on that?
Yeah, we also work with the agency and not the host family, so the agencies are supposed to go through us for approval first, and then once they're approved, then they place them with host families, but we're finding that that's not always the case, that some of the agencies are kind of doing it backwards, and we've come into some issues, so we're just trying to fine tune things so that we can provide the best experience for those students when they are here.
Okay. This is the practice we've used historically before Mrs. McDonald, when Bob was here for Student Services, it just wasn't reflected in our board policy, that's what was such.
But, but I know that we've accepted half-year students many times, because my understanding is that if, in a lot of those countries, if they come for a whole year, they are repeating because it doesn't transfer. So a lot of the students want to come for a half-year, and then they can take a test, and get credit, and they don't have to repeat. So it seems to me that we're like shutting out students by saying you have to come for a whole year. We're actually forcing them to repeat, or choose not to come, you know, to Sylvania. So I guess, I don't understand, it's never, and my understanding, it's never been a policy that we didn't take them for half-year, because I know several host families, you know, that have had students that were here for half-year.
So I went, I've gone through, and I think there were two in the last five years that we have accepted due to emergency situations, but it gets difficult because every country is different. Some countries will take the credits, some, no matter what, they have to take that placement test in order to be promoted, and then some schools say if you're going, some countries will say even if you go, you're going to repeat anyways. So we're trying to provide that full year experience for them, so that is why we're trying to find tune what we have done in the past.
Okay, I mean, I guess my question would be, how does it harm us, like as a district, to take students for half-year? If that's the, if that's, I mean, listen, if I, while my kids are in high school, I wouldn't want to send them away for a whole year, but I might have been comfortable with half-year. I mean, it's asking a lot to say, hey, sophomore, why don't you go move to America for the whole school year? So my question is, how does it harm us as a district to just do it for a half-year placement? Because I mean, I think it's great for our students, it's great for our community, we're providing a service for students, so how does it harm us as a district to do it?
Great questions. Good conversation. It doesn't, it doesn't harm us at all, I mean, to have these students come in mid-year or say half-year, but from our perspective, we're kind of looking out for that student as well. From a district perspective, we can, we can do it however we want it, but we just don't want it to be a situation where, as we've kind of talked about, it could harm them not earning those credit to the requirements and go back to their.
But we wouldn't necessarily know, because every country, every district outside of Sylvania might do it differently, so might we be causing a hardship? Because we're trying to say, well, overall, we think this would be better for you, isn't that up to students, their families in their districts?
Ultimately, yes. What is kind of standard practice, what do other public districts do? Do they take foreign exchange students for half-year?
Based on what I've looked at, it looks like they try to stick to that full year, and some districts also have limits on how many students they'll take from certain countries per year, and/or limits of how many students they take from any JSC.
Yeah, I guess I'd be more comfortable with those kind of situations, you know, limits on how many foreign exchange students we're taking at each high school, and I think we do have that. We do have.
We have guidelines.
We have, we already have some of those guidelines. I would say like I, for one, would not be in favor of just, if it's, if it doesn't harm us as a district or our schools, because I think it only adds to our students' experiences and we're providing experiences for other students, I would not be in favor of that. I mean, that's just a made up, so.
Is there a way, or have we thought about having a policy, or do we already do this, where we only accept admissions at semester break, quarter break, or at, you know, some, you know, at a, kind of like how you said, you know.
Like in a natural break in the year?
Yeah, at a natural break, whether it's a quarter or a semester, or.
That may, from my perspective, that, if any hardships were caused on the family, that would minimize it, because it would have at least a quarter credit of a semester credit. I mean, that's something that could go in.
And probably easier for the school too, and the teachers, not trying to catch somebody up in the middle of a quarter in October.
Correct.
So are we trying to, I mean, is there a situation where these agencies are just negotiating with families and hey, take an exchange student, and then the family's like, okay, I have to enroll him now, and they haven't made prior, I mean, I would be comfortable with a, a policy that requires the agencies to make prior arrangement.
That's in the.
Oh, that's already.
That is in there.
They just don't follow.
They're not always following.
Yes, and that's something we'll consider for our job.
I mean, in those agencies that are problematic, couldn't we just not work with them?
That is also something that we have discussed.
I mean, I, I would prefer, I mean, if an agency is problematic, and they're not following our rules, and they're causing hardship to Student Services, or whomever, I'm pretty comfortable with not working with those agencies.
Yep.
I mean, I'm going with that, but I don't want kids, right?
So do, just continued discussions, is something we just pull out altogether? Do you want, if you want us to come up with some language where we allow them to enter or leave at a natural break? I mean, ultimately, say you can't leave till end of third quarter spring break, they can leave whatever they want, or do we just pull it out and leave it as is?
I mean, I think you're right, we can't prevent them from going, it's not jail, so.
We could have them start at a natural break, though that would at least help them.
Yeah, I mean, and if they leave, that's their decision, and however that harms them academically, they may in their own choice.
But going back to your question, there's no harm on the district, and we technically don't follow up with the other country and see if they were accepted back, and we don't follow up to make sure they accomplish what they want to accomplish. They're no different than a student from another district, to another district in the state or one of the countries.
How many agencies do we present work with that are active?
There's currently three. One reaches out, one particular one reaches out more frequently than another. I actually have a meeting with Mr. Hoffman over at Southview tomorrow, who's one of our foreign language teachers, who has connections with an agency that is looking to work with us more frequently, and he wants to learn more about that, so Lucas and I are meeting tomorrow afternoon with him, but during his planning, it's unfortified. Dr. Ben, sorry.
Tam, could you explain for everyone the distinction that we discussed about students who are just shadowing for short periods of time?
We do work, it's Kelsey Wulisky, she's the one who directly works French teacher at Northview, with the Sylvania Exchange Program, where we've had students come in, Tammy asked about this, she saw the policy on Friday, and like, I know we've had kids come in for three or six weeks, but those are just a shadowing experience, just those students who came in specifically from France, and being with that situation with the Sylvania Exchange Program to just observe, see how our way of life is, see how our school districts work and center, and it's more of a shadowing experience rather than earning credits and taking classes, and then they go to the experiences in the schools.
Is that also a policy would not prevent that?
No, that would not prevent, the policy had nothing with that.
And I know we have the AP courses, Dr. Ben's, where they are required in order, because I came to an event at your school last year.
Global Studies Program.
Global Studies, and they are required to go and do almost like a shadowing, but not for credit per se, but is it for a semester?
I wouldn't want to speak without knowing for certain. I can tell you that that's not an AP course, that's a separate, that's a, the Global Studies Program, you can start earning badges from ninth grade on, and I believe almost everything has some sort of alternative. So it might say study abroad or host a family, and there's probably still another "for", they really wish you to try to do those two things, because obviously writing a paper would not be equivalent to that experience, but it's pretty rare that you're pigeonholed into having to leave the country or host someone from another country just to earn it. But that, I think everyone who has earned it has done one of those things, but it's not, it's not a semester. Like even if you just travel abroad with an EF tours for 10 days, you get the badge.
That's what I agree with, because they saw their slides, and it was really, it was a very powerful, global competence at its best.
Great.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious if one of those things they can do is be a foreign exchange student in another country, or is any of them do it for you, you're saying a semester is enough? Because do you know, any of our students that go, I mean, I'm sure students from Southview go, are they going for the whole year, or are they just going for a semester, or are they doing both?
I actually don't know. The one thing I would make a point about is I do not think a quarter is a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
The credit doesn't work that way. I think we're setting ourselves up for a problem that Tim's referring to, like there could be hardship for a kid. I don't know off the top of my head. I can think of a person who's done it since I've been at Southview, but I think, I think they did a year actually, but I don't, I can't, can't say for sure.
Yeah, I, I just was curious, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it was my kid, I could like.
Yeah, that's a long.
You can go for like three months, but I'm not so sure the whole year, but every year. Yeah, I'm not worried for me. It was my college daughter.
No, but there are kids who want to participate in like international business, or they want to get fluent in a language because they know that's going to change.
Right.
Their, their career path, and so that's why it looks appealing, even though I'm sure they're in our phone.
Okay.
My, my recommendation is we pull it, and Melissa just works with the organizations to try to have them start obviously at the beginning of the year, stay the full year, But then the recommendation, if they are going to come late and late early, it's a natural for a year.
At least they come in, because I don't imagine if they leave.
So just the policy as is, and we go with the company, we'll definitely listen.
I mean, could we do something in the policy where, you know, to help you with the agencies that aren't really following the rules that like, I mean, I guess it's hard to say we're not, that's there, we're not going to let your student in if you don't do it because then we're hurting kids.
Well, I mean, the current.
I don't like that either.
The current policy is vague and you can accept or deny it anytime.
But it's kids who are hurting.
Yeah, and, and I think addressing with an agency who's maybe not checking with us first and placing the kids before acceptance, we need to address that.
Yeah.
Is the bigger issue, in my opinion.
Can that be addressed? Do we, I mean, if we're not following our policies now, changing the policy, would that help?
Say that again.
If, if they're, if they're not really following our policies now, then changing the policy, is that really going to help that situation?
Lucas is obviously going to put an exit, well, here's this kid who's here from Germany. I'm sorry, you can't go to our school and we don't want to.
And there's someone in our community in an emergency situation that is willing to take that kid. That's what seems to be happening, but it's, I question the frequency of why that's happening with a particular agency.
I, I agree with Julie, just not working with them, see if they're not going to follow.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Zederman. We are with you now, Mr. Zederman.
Thank you. I am recommending approval of items seven point one through seven point three on a consent agenda basis. Seven point one is a licensed substitute teacher. Seven point two is a license to retirement. I want to thank Susan Misko. She has 34 years of service with Savania, 36 total in the field of education. So Susan, thank you and congratulations. And then seven point three is a license to resignation. I move for approval on a consent agenda basis, item seven point one through seven point three.
I'll second. Any comments? Call the roll.
Joe.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Thank you. I am recommending items eight point one through eight point three on a consent agenda basis. Eight point one are classified new hires. Eight point two are the classified personnel changes. And eight point three is a classified resignation.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items eight point one, three, three.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Tammy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm recommending items nine point one and nine point two on a consent agenda basis. Nine point one are supplemental positions for the 22, 23 school year. Nine point two are athletic volunteers for the 22, 23 school year. I'll move for approval, items nine point one and nine point two on a consent agenda basis.
I'll second. Any comments? Okay, call the roll.
Julie.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, it is to us. Now is our opportunity for board committee reports and announcements. Julie, you have anything?
Of course, foundation, somebody's most foundation met earlier this week, last week, last week. Recently, last week.
In a second.
Okay.
And it, it's really active, it was a great meeting. That we're going to have like little committees with members for like fundraising, academic, athletics, alumni. It's, it's really very nice, pretty exciting all the stuff that's happening. The academic banquet, it's March 17th. You should probably be getting invitations soon. So hopefully you could attend, you could attend somebody's country club this year. For teachers, like a lot of grants were awarded like back in December. So they do teacher grants and there's a deadline for the next batch, February 28th. Dave Spees is, Spees is being conducted with the Jim Glaze Award, I think he was called, Jim Glaze Award for athletics, which that's pretty exciting. That'll be at the Athletic Foundation, which is in August, it's going to be early this year because the Northview Southview theme is early. Oh, they're doing some cool thing, like they're getting on the earbuds. We're going to put them, make them electronic, like the earbuds. So that's pretty cool. So going way back, so that's cool. And let's see, so many prevention lines, dark gold crown is February 25th. What was it? Liz Young is down preparing for the year. And I think that's all. Mr. Palmer.
I do not have anything, I don't have any meetings, it's a live meeting.
Yeah.
So many community services met this past week and we did one of those fun activities of the new budget. So that's for a fun meeting. But they're, probably the biggest news is they've launched a new website. And it's, um, it's a very nice website. I encourage you all to, to go to it. They're working on also the preschool program. They'd like to, as they've said in the past, they'd like to bring it up to a premier status. So they've been working with that. Those are probably the biggest things going on there. We did have a senior center update and childcare update together, but nothing other than what I've just mentioned. And strategic plan, social emotional wellbeing committee met. Do you want to do this or would you like me to?
Mr. Board Report?
I prefer to you.
Well, we've got Dan and Melissa here.
That's true.
So we can all chat in this meeting.
That's true.
It's a good meeting.
Um, it was a very good meeting. We are researching possibility of maybe an outside source or agency to help provide screening to evaluate student wellness. Along with that, providing responsive services to address those needs, hopefully by the end of the 22, 23 school year. And we're also continuing to move ahead. I mean, it's, it's a working committee and we're been meeting on a fairly frequent and consistent basis. It's been fun.
I can update our meeting this Friday, but I'll update synopsis week. Just more specifics about the outside screen and the agency. And I know they've done some work for Southview, their social emotional learning over there, pretty, pretty reputable individual women have worked through, already formed some quality relationships in the districts, so I'll share that this Friday.
Tammy.
Okay. Uh, we had a meeting cabinet this afternoon and Ray shared with us that the tower is up and.
I saw it, that's what I'm saying.
Apparently they are looking to flip the switch sometime this week. So they are ahead of schedule and cautiously after this, it's a sixth. But guess what? We might be able to use our phones and call you a downtown, by Friday. So that is pretty exciting and good for folks to know.
Yeah. Um, I don't have any committee reports. I was out and about this weekend and went to the donation of the Northview garage sale. A lot of cold parents out there accepting donations. And then, so I think there's one more weekend. So if you've got junk, bring it on down. And then I went to Southview Cougar at Shield Case last night. I just have to say it was amazing. It's just, it's amazing to see the talent at the high school level. And I say that when we do the orchestra concerts and the band concerts. It's just, it's so good to see kids just kicking it and I love it. So that was fun. That's all I've got. Last item we have for approval tonight on the board, our appointment for the Savania area joint recreation district. We have a proposal to prove Kevin Dancyan as a Savania board rep. Somebody want to move for approval?
Second.
Any comments?
Thank you, Kevin.
Very excited about this.
We had great, um, we had, we had great applicants, that was a good question.
It was. Okay, call the roll.
Julie.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Greg.